A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated August 10th, 2023, and reading as follows, "The honorable members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presrocky, Delta County Clerk." Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for all our blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call. Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner View?
Here.
Commissioner Barron?
Here.
Commissioner Moyle?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. The meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We would need approval of the previous minutes of 8:123.
I would make a motion that we accept the minutes.
A move by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those would pass. Tonight's agenda, I have some adjustments to it, nobody else does, but gentlemen, I would like to hear your adjustments first. That being said then, under old business, I wanted to take, now these are misnumbered, item 17 and 19, which should be 17 and 18. Can we take those from old business and put them under general orders of business or unfinished business? It's where we're pulling them from, and what I would like to do is put them under general orders of business so Cory doesn't have to sit here for an entire meeting. We can get him out of here a little bit quicker. So he wants to give us a report.
You want to take them from new business, put them under unfinished?
Yeah, okay, so officially, item 170, new business, I apologize, I said old business tonight. So, under new business, take items 17 and 19, which should be 17 and 18, but however you have that.
15 and 16.
There's no 15.
I can't.
I got 17.
Guys, let me, there's a few numbering problems, I apologize. We're becoming aware of them as we speak now, so by the time we vote on this, we will have clarity, I promise you. So, but I can only do one thing at a time because I'm getting confused just listening to you. The first thing I would like to do is take, under new business, 17 and 19, standing, there's no 18. And I would like to move that to general orders of business. Can we do that? No more problems with that on the board, okay? Anything else with the, any adjustments?
Is that the first thing under a general order?
That, you know, yeah, I would think we would put that in prior to number one, so if you want to put that to point five or whatever, item zero, I don't care.
I'll move that, we do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. View. Commissioner View moved, moving those two items, and Commissioner Peterson supported that. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, was there any discussion on item 15? There is no 15, or?
There is no 15.
Addition of number 15, it's the personnel recommendation of stipends.
Okay, so we need to take number fif, that needs to be, we need to add an item 15 under new business, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to add the recommendations under new business from the Personnel Committee, that would be item 15. Kind of like casinos don't have a 13th floor, we just missed a 15th. Okay.
What item is that we're talking about?
That would be, under new business, item 15, which doesn't exist now.
It was to do with adding that language to job descriptions.
We need a motion. Move by Commissioner View?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner, although additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we would need one final motion to accept the agenda as amended then.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner to accept this agenda as amended. Additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda, gentlemen, thank you. Okay, so, that being said, presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded, anything, Ashley?
That would be uploaded, no.
Okay, so typically, that's the first meeting of the month, but, all right, very good. Reports of standing statutory and special committees and others? Do we have any?
No.
Okay, very good. And then we have, I think, who wants to address the board tonight on agenda items? But if somebody didn't sign up and you would like to? More than welcome to. Addressing the board on agenda items.
I only got the agenda 15 minutes ago.
Sorry, I can't help that, sir. If you haven't, if you want to address it, I'd be more than happy to offer you the time.
I already know, we can't refuse.
Sir, I'm offering you the time, if you don't want it, that's fine. All right, very good, then we'll move past that item. Moving on now to public, we moved past that. The administrators' report, we're looking at committee reports. Ashley, you have a report?
On August 9th of 2023, the Building and Grounds Committee met in regards to updates about ongoing projects. The relocation utilities control contract needs to be modified. The primary contractor and the subcontractor are unable to proceed forward with the project because of administrative issues between the two. The committee recommends that the county, Delta County, contract directly with the subcontractor for the electrical work that needs to get done. A meeting will be arranged between Train, Director of Maintenance, and myself to discuss the deduction that will be modified in the contract along with the removal of the subcontractor upon approval. Delta County is about 70% complete with the multi-storage building behind the service center. This building is being constructed with the combined monies of Public Health, Delta Menominee, Delta County Veterans Affairs, and the county itself. The Prosecutor's Office has requested that a door be added to their office for victims to be brought directly to the conference room. There is no additional cost to the county's budget since the crime victim relief program and the maintenance budget will cover the cost. The airport manager is still continuing on. We have asked a few candidates to take a walk around the airport to help make the Advisory Board's decision on the next airport manager. Today, I had a meeting with individuals involved with the honor flight, and that is to happen this upcoming September. On the county annual budget, this week I'm having meetings with each department about their budgets. So far, I've completed meetings with front of the court, prosecutor, attorney, IT, and maintenance. The tentative schedule for the public hearing on the budget is September 5th and to finalize for approval on September 19th. Update on the U.P. Fair authority. Yesterday's forecast for the fair called for rain, but the rain held off and the first day went off without issues. According to Vicki Mishaw, the cornhole tournament had a great turnout with 100 registered teams and completed at 1:00 PM. Thank you all for who participated in that event. Today's events were tastings on Tuesdays from 12 to 4, where vendors came together to sample dishes at a discounted rate for attendees to try. If we end this meeting on time by 8 o'clock, we'll all be able to go see the grandstands entertainment. So that's all I have for tonight.
I would need a motion to place Ashley's report on file.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Barron?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? None seen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you, that passes. Building and grounds committee, minutes of August 9th of 2023? Orders from Building and Grounds or just putting those on file?
Well, there was a few things, and Ashley already mentioned some of them.
They look good.
Yeah, everything does look good. Parking lot is all done, seal coated. Garage, it's, like Ashley said, 70% done now that they got the tubes in for the heating and the cement, it's going to be bored. There was a project in the service center that was done today, and they're carpeting the jail, two, couple of rooms, the interview room, they're going to be carpeting that, the walls also, and a classroom, and now got all done.
Very good, could I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, John.
I'd like to add too that we, our administrator recognized a insect-infested tree that needs to be removed at the airport, it's looking terrible. And there's going to be some major upgrades there, and there is some issues with the flooring that she's going to discuss with our, what is that?
Advisory Board?
Well, not, not the advisory board, but the TSA department that rents it from us on fixing it without putting all the money in now because the whole remodeling is going to be done within the next nine months or something. So, I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Okay.
One other thing, the roof at the courthouse is all done and it did meet budget, so, which was, I think Cory said 369, $369,000. It's good to hear that. That's all done too, no more leaks.
I would need a motion to place these minutes and reports on file.
So move.
Okay, move by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. All right, moving on to the Personnel Committee, minutes, Mr. Melner?
Uh, we had a meeting, let's see here, on the 9th, and we went over with Cory and Ashley, Steve and I, parks maintenance, job description, we looked it all over, everything looked good, so we let that go through. We did talk a little bit about, a lot about the contract for the administrator, we did make some adjustments again, and I just got it here about two hours ago from, is all the changes.
I have a comment. We, we also reverted back to the old system of review of the administrator until we can actually implement a, hopefully, from a good system of review to a better system of review. And that was one of the sticking, sticking points in our ability to gain a signature on the, on the, on the administrator's contract.
All right, very good, nothing else from either of you? I'd need a motion to put on file. Move by Commissioner View?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Finance Committee, minutes of August the 9th of 2023, Mr. Barron?
Yes, we, we met on the 9th, all three committees met on the 9th, actually, and see, we were, the airport manager's salary, that's going to be coming up, I believe, further in the agenda, we worked through that. The parks maintenance, that's also an agenda item. And then the building and grounds recommendation, the relocation of utilities, we'll be addressing that, I believe, under unfinished business. And there was some, another, some other was brought concerning the per diem for board members for different meetings, and expanding the amount of meetings that you would get paid for on a day, daily basis. Was, was, there was no action taken upon that, it was brought, it was, felt that it should come to the board for discussion. It was something brought by Commissioner Melner. Ashley brought it on his behalf, so that'll be it. I would move that the minutes be...
Do you second the motion?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
These minutes are accepted. Do we have department head updates? Department head updates on anybody? All right, we'll move on to, Cory is, this would be a part of items 17 and 19. Come on in, Cory, thank you for your time. Bless you.
Well, we had, we had some problems with the utility project, if you've read that stuff I give, that Ashley gave you. We had, we had...
I can't hear you, could you?
We had, the electrician came over to go over to, to get started on the job, so we had electrical inspector come in to go over it with him, and some of the disconnects were separated, we're not allowed to do that. And the electrical inspector called the, called Lansing to the electrical chief, and he said that our plans had not reached plan review in Lansing, which they should have way before it was started, so we wouldn't have had this problem. So, now, in order to, in order to fix it, we had to expedite a new disconnect, and the disconnect has to be relocated. All the disconnects for the building have to be in the same spot, so that if, if there's a fire, the fire department comes in, they know where to shut the whole building up instead of having one on each end, and nobody gets electrocuted. So, that's pretty much the gist of it. So, we're at the point of about $8,300 for a disconnect to get it here expedited, so...
Do you need any kind of board action, or are you just giving us a FYI?
We, we had, we, we talked and we got, we had given the electric company, told them to go ahead and get the equipment ordered, otherwise it was 16 weeks if we just, they just ordered it, but to expedite it, it was $8,300, that's what it was. So that'll be, that should be here shortly, and then, we also ran into a problem with some of the heating lines that were above the, above the drop tile ceiling where the electrical panels were going. They were located directly above where the panels were going, were, were going to go, so the last two days, I had two guys from Prime Mechanical, myself and Rich, Nate, and we demoed all, all that pipe out, rerouted all that pipe around and out of the way so electricians could keep going. And while we shut down, we had, we had some six-inch valves that were leaking that we wanted to do anyway, so we did those at the same time today, and then demoed some heaters out in the entry that we needed. So, the shutdown worked out pretty good in our favor, and then now we're filling the system right now, so the heating system is pretty much 100% piped and done. We're working on the chiller piping right now, which is going pretty good. It's been pretty smooth until the other day. We got some projects coming up, we're going to be starting on all the door readers, I don't think we got, is it 100 door readers or something like that? We're going to start installing, kind of putting everything else on hold, we're going to go after that. And we got a project at the airport, we got about 160 feet of metal to change on the bottom of the FedEx building? Yeah, FedEx building. The bottom of, the bottom of the FedEx building rotted out, you can see right outside, so we got the materials ordered, we're going to cut that out, change it all, and hopefully fairly soon before it gets cold. All the, all the in-floor heat's done in the building, over here, all the plumbing's done, the oil separators, pumps, everything's in, in ground, tested, it's all been inspected. Got concrete coming tomorrow, so it'll be all poured tomorrow, we got garage doors coming Tuesday or Wednesday next week, so I'll pretty much tighten up the, that building to, to where we're at until, then we got to, Dave Xavier's got a grant to finish his, his whole end of his building insulated, heated. So we got, I got a number for prosecutors carpeting for the budget for next year. We got, like I said, roof's done, parking lots are done, hallways are all done, all lighting's been changed, painted, all the bases down. Just got done with an airport inspection, we had people out there Saturday and Sunday working, and didn't do too bad, we just got some painting to do, I'll have a guy out there the next three days, he's going to take care of TSA offices and paint all the offices, it's got to be done by the 10th or something like, September 10th.
Stage is a courthouse security, have we done anything with that?
Well, part, the, the door readers and stuff are going to be the first thing that we're starting on, we're going to, kind of, we're wrapping up most of the stuff that we got.
I thought we were talking about something, just for the front door to begin with in phase one, is anything moving that way with that?
The metal detectors and stuff?
The metal detectors, we're waiting on our grant through our insurance company to come through approval prior to purchasing anything.
Then we are going to...
I know what the public's interested in.
We're going to do circuit cords front too, with the...
Yeah, and we're also going to be redoing the front doors of the circuit courtroom.
So that won't, it won't be arch, right there, it'll be a straight wall with bulletproof doors, and he'll be able to unlock it and lock it from his desk, through his bench, so...
Pretty neat.
Other than that, I think that's about it.
Thank you for your service, sir, appreciate your time.
We got, we got a guy working out at the parks, trying to get a guy out at the parks, helping out Steve, Ben.
On Wednesday?
Yeah, on Wednesday, yeah, I thought today was Wednesday, so I sent him out there today. So, yeah. Good job. Other than that, that's about it.
Ashley, we don't need any motion on the money being spent so far?
It's in the agenda.
It's the next two items.
Okay, very good. All right, I appreciate your time, Steve, very much. Any other questions for Steve? Cory, not Steve. Got me thinking of Steve Weary, sorry. All right, very good, we're moving on then to unfinished business. We've been talking...
If I may?
Yes, you may.
General orders of business was 17 and 19?
Correct, yes.
We just talked about...
We just talked about...
Okay, that's all we got to do with that, okay, perfect.
No problem, no. Quite con...
Yeah, we have to do motions.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that was just his update. While we're moving on to the agenda.
Well, then we would need commission approval to meet the financial costs of items 17 and 19. The exact amount was 8,900?
I would make the motion.
I'll support that motion.
Well, what is your motion, you just want to...
Okay, my, my motion is that we okay the expenditure, expenditures for items 17 and 19.
And you have a motion from Commissioner Peterson and a second from Commissioner View?
Yeah, support that cost.
Very good, additional discussion? All the, Mr. Barron?
I would, I would, Ashley, you've got the figures, so we can clarify those.
It is, for the disconnect is $14,500, or, yeah, $587.23. And then for the other item that Cory had mentioned... Is $4,400. The other item that he had mentioned was the moving of the water pipe away from the control panels, just...
Okay, so, will your motions and your seconds reflect those figures, then, yes?
Yes.
Very good, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 17 and 19 are passed. Moving on now to unfinished business, contract for the county administrator.
One more on 19.
Oh, so that was 17 and 19, then goes one, I apologize.
Nope, I have one more addition onto 19.
Very good.
So 19, or, I'm sorry, it's 17. 17 is the control contract. What is happening is Train is the general contractor for our control contract, and Billy Electric is the subcontractor. Like I had stated earlier, those two have to, there's a disagreement among them, so they're, we're asking if we contract directly with Billy Electric and remove them from subcontractor. So in order to do that, I have to modify the contract, which needs approval from the board to do so, and then contract with Billy Electric separately.
So you would need two separate motions, then, yes? All right, item number one would be amending the contract. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion that we amend the contract.
Okay, I'll support that.
By, to remove Billy Electric from that?
We would amend the contract by the removal of Billy.
And that, that basically doesn't change any scope of the, of the work, it just had to do with some liability insurance.
We have a motion, hold your thought, please, so I don't...
Well, I wanted to talk...
You will under discussion, I promise. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Now additional discussion, so we have a motion on the floor, go ahead, Steve, I didn't mean that.
No, that's okay.
All right, all those, any additional discussion? All right, very good. All those in favor of removing Billy Electric from the contract thereby amending it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we have an amended contract, now, the second item you need. Commissioners, do you need a recap on that?
It's just to contract with them directly, no change.
I would make a motion that we contract with Billy Electric directly.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron, discussion.
I just, I just want the public to know that this has nothing to do with the scope of the project, it has something to do with some liability insurance that the subcontractor was not willing to pay for, for, for this one project, because it was probably, wasn't cost-effective, that, that's all it was.
And there is no financial change. We're going to receive a deduct on our original contract and then just contract with them directly, so...
We have a motion and a supports, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Now, the much beleaguered unfinished, so we have the contract for the county administrator Commissioners?
Steve, you want to take over on the, on something there?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple things, I don't know how much I want to give at this point, but the original contract, there's some changes made as I walked in here today that wasn't brought up to the Personnel Committee, and I think it has to do with backdating a contract, if I'm not mistaken. And so I did a little research, backdating a contract, just to let everybody know, is a practice of marking an agreement or contract with a date that is prior to the actual date. The United States Court of Appeals of the Seventh Circuit has recognized backdating that memorializes and a legitimate practice, meaning that if we agree something orally and the job is being done, that oral position in that contract can be dated at that date. The only criteria for that is, is recommended that the backdating be disclosed by utilizing as-of dating or identifying the date of the execution. And I noticed tonight, I'm looking on what came in my packet, it says this agreement was made, entered into this 18th day of July, 2023, that's what was in my packet. Tonight I received, where is it? The contract without any input, as far as I'm concerned, of the commission, that says this agreement is made, entered into the 15th day, day of August, 2023. And I have a lot of research done on this and a lot of reasons why this date may have been changed, but I prefer us just to either figure out if we can backdate it, is our attorney here. I, I know she made a recommendation that it's not a good practice, but it is legal to do for legitimate reasons. And this is a legitimate reason because we maintained a oral agreement at a certain date to implement this contract, and it's entirely, that could be backdated, and it is a legal practice. It's, it's, I'm not an attorney, but that's, that's what I found out.
We don't have an attorney, we have a prosecutor who's been helping us, but we do not have municipal counsel. Lauren's here.
Lauren is here, she's on her way over, I just texted her.
Lauren is here, she's on her way over, I just texted her.
Actually, she's here.
Oh, but to explain, explain to Commissioner View, those changes were made last week and I got the changes yesterday morning and...
Who made them?
The, the...
Is it Nancy who can't hear?
Yeah.
Nancy, could you lean forward, please? Thank you.
Okay, so I received the changes yesterday morning and I just got to those changes today.
I'm not blaming anyone.
Right, no, I'm just saying what happened, why you just got that now. So I made the changes that were recommended because it was sent to the prosecutor for her recommendation, so I made the changes in red, I mean, they're not, that's why they're in there, because she recommended them. So that's why what you receive in your packet is different than what you receive today.
Okay, but backdating contracts is not usually advisable. I'm, I'm just going by what I've, I spent a lot of time on this because I thought it was important, if it's important to save the county three, four thousand dollars, and we have already agreed to it prior, I thought it was worth arguing about on behalf of, of the county, Ashley, and the citizens and taxpayers. Backdating a contract is new, not usually advisable, however, it may be permissible in acting to enforce an earlier arrangement, not yet subject to a written contract. I'm not an attorney, but these are some law offices' questions that I answered and they, it, it's permissible, if it's done properly and not to defraud or do something that's out of the ordinary to, to do stuff.
Commissioners? Mr. Barron?
Yes, I think the way the contract was, this came as an email this afternoon from Nancy, and using today's date, because we've, we've been trying to get a contract done for some three months, I think, using today's date and then going forward to the fifteenth of, of August of twenty-six, that it would be prudent for us to get this done, we've been, it's been taken, it's taken more than enough time, and the dates I don't think are, are gonna be a major issue because we didn't have the particulars of this contract back in July, we changed things. As of last week, these changes were put into effect, Nancy received those changes yesterday. This is, this is the contract that's been presented as of today, and I believe this is when, this should be the contract that's presented, starting with today's date.
But you have the contract in the packet that was presented with the agreement between the Personnel Committee and the Administrator.
I understand that, but the, this, this is what came from the committee and asking the review by the prosecutor.
Right.
And as of this date, so I, I would believe that we need to offer this contract as it's, with the dates of today, and then move forward from here.
Commissioner Peterson, anything?
I could agree with Commissioner Barron, this has been going on and on and on, and I don't really wanna continue on for another month here on this. One concern that I had was the increases, the salary increases, and I see that's been taken care of and I, and I, I appreciate that, I think that that's, that's the move that I wanted to see done. I've been thinking about this for a couple of weeks and, and that's the only action I can see. I, I hesitate to make a lot of changes from previous administrators to this one. And I, looking through this, I think that this is a perfectly acceptable contract, and the sooner that we can get this over to Ms. Young and, and have her okay it, it's just, it's gotta be done. And so I, I would, that we move this on up.
I'll support that.
You have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion, gentlemen. Mr. Melner?
Well, you know, but July eighteenth, all of us really sat down and talked about this and we said the eighteenth would have been, July eighteenth would have been the day, and now we're changing it now until the fifteenth. Now if she don't accept it again, what are we gonna do, wait two more weeks and then put another date on it?
If, if I may, um, we, I don't think we really offered her a contract at the last one because all the details were not in the contract. And so my feeling is, is actually for her to accept it, we had to, we had to write those things, we wrote them and they're here today and they're written. I, I, I think to make her go back to a contract that wasn't even finished at that time, I think would be not fair, and like I said, as I said, I believe that we should move forward with this and, and get this done and over with.
Nothing I bring forward to this board is acceptable, if it's legal, to backdate it with all the, the rulings, can we have Lauren speak on it? I, I know she's probably, I believe she, she is capable of advising us on a lot of issues, especially like this.
That's never been a concern of mine, her capability at all.
Well, no, but you, I heard somebody through all chain, a municipal attorney.
What I said was we have a prosecutor who's helping us, I, somebody, people refer to her as corporate counsel, and I don't know that that's fair to her.
I don't know if it's not.
Close session.
Oh, that's needed here. Can you address Mr. View's concern?
My concern with backdating at this point is going back to July eighteenth, and I've seen it on prior iterations of the contract to, I think even going back all the way to February, is at no point was there a meeting of the minds. You don't have a contract until you have a meeting of the minds. And throughout the process, Ashley has been in a position that she has been doing the job of controller, or, she's been the controller doing the job of the administrator, so you don't have a consistency of terms across the board. And so the instances where backdating it is, is you have consistency of terms going back to that whatever date you're gonna backdate it to. I don't believe that we have that at this point, and I don't believe with how it's been structured up until the point where the contract process started, and even to the point of on July eighteenth, without having that consistency of terms, that's where you run into an issue with the backdating portion. It is absolutely possible in certain instances, it is my recommendation that in this instance, it's not a good idea.
So having a, a meeting with, with the Personnel Committee and an agreement at that time is not a meeting of the minds?
It is not a meeting of the minds until it's all signed, but at that point you still had corrections or things that were needed to be added, is my understanding, I think they were, you were particularly looking at how...
Well, we didn't, but the opposition had a lot of issues, which we addressed all of them to her satisfaction, except I, I, I just don't feel comfortable giving in on everything in order to get this contract signed.
But that's exactly where you don't have a meeting of the minds, is we have some individuals who might be thinking one thing, Ms. Young might be thinking another thing, if there was corrections or things where she rejected the, the contract from July eighteenth, and I didn't think it had gone through that formal of a process that she had said no to the contract, please correct me if I'm wrong, I know I came into that Personnel Committee meeting a little after the fact, but at that point, the, the contract that was presented essentially on July eighteenth was being modified to add certain changes, was my understanding of the situation.
I thank you for your time. Any additional questions? Thank you, Lauren. All right, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, is there any additional discussion? If not, I would like a roll call, please.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes, that'll pass, thank you, gentlemen. All right, approval of the administration to request opinions of counsel. Ashley?
Attached, you have a policy for requiring of a personnel policy, or, I'm sorry, a municipal attorney policy. And I'm looking for approval of such policy, which it states is, we have our Mermel insurance company, we also have our prosecuting acting as our municipal attorney, and then we also have an RFP that we put out for a municipal attorney, and it was Scott Graham. And I would like to have permission to seek counsel with any of those in, first off, I would attend to Mermel to make sure that all claims and liabilities and it's not covered underneath our policy. If it is denied there, I would like to contact Lauren, our prosecuting attorney, and if she has denied that, she will not cover or represent us.
Conflicted interest or something, whatever.
Right, then I would go to Scott Graham. It's just a proceeding because I see that there's a lot of questions on how we would proceed with municipal attorneys, and I figured having a policy down, nobody can question. And that would run for the whole board commissioners and myself.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, is there a dollar amount on that?
You wanna, you wanna cap that with a dollar amount, any of you, I mean, clearly our administrators get, you know, accountable to the board, I know that some of you have expressed concerns that we don't want any nilly-willy activities, and there's been no indication that that's gonna be the case, but if you'd be more comfortable?
And, and I was just, I was just curious, I think, I think at some point, that, that could come to the board for, for an okay, at, after it reaches five thousand dollars or something like that.
You know, I think the, the amount that I put forth last time was twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
And I, I don't see her doing that simply because she can't. There's, there are things in the works that MMRMA are gonna touch, and I don't know if Lauren will or not based on her discretion, and so what I want to do is give Ashley the opportunity to have a lever of control that she might not be bound into waiting for two weeks to talk to us again if there's an emergency, but this doesn't mean that, you know, the baby's going out with the bathwater, it's just an, it's an opportunity to give her a chance to protect the county.
Can, can I make a comment?
All the time, whenever you want, sir, I mean, seriously.
Can we put a clause in there that a rule of engagement in order to do that would be, get a hold of the chair, if we have to go through three steps, there'll be enough time?
I don't have a problem with that.
You know, and then the chair can make that decision along with her. And, and, and I think it wouldn't be a bad idea just to send out a mass email to all the commissioners, do not respond, but we're hiring an attorney, and then give just a brief analysis of what it is.
And it doesn't necess, yeah, that's absolutely fine if you wanted that extra layer...
Well, we need to be up, we need, we need to be on top of it, because I've heard of talking with attorneys by this board, not from the board, but from the public, telling me ahead of time that there was conversations with attorney and they, they're quizzing me on, on it, and I have no idea about it, I just wanna stay in the link as an elected official.
I would challenge you with that, to make sure that that would be a factual statement because we have Mr. Graham numerous times and he hasn't sent one bill to the county or charged us a dime.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
But I'm just letting, I mean, you know...
You don't have to challenge me, just watch the meeting that it happened at, you know.
I would again indicate that you, there's been no bills sent, so, I mean, people talk to attorneys every day, so, but I have no problem with your caveat in there, Mr. Uh, Mr. View, is, any problem with that, Ashley?
My only thought is about, in our rules of procedures, it does say that the commissioners can also contact attorneys, so requiring, that can be done without my knowledge.
That's okay.
Okay, so then you might not be notified if, you know, section...
That opens up Pandora's box.
I just wanna make sure that that's just stated.
Explain, explain the Pandora's box.
Well, if anybody can get a hold of corporate counsel, you wanna go through, I mean, what, this was indicating that the, the administrator can do that, if she's concerned about something, you put in that safeguard of, okay, have her talk to the chair, which I like, whoever, I mean, that's fine, it's not an issue of the chair, it's just one more layer of security as our fiduciary obligation, but if commissioners can simply, you know, simply get a hold of counsel, you could be getting belted left and right with, you know, opinion that costs two, three, four thousand dollars each time that happens.
Well, I'm not in favor of each commissioner being, being able to have the authority without board approval except for the chair in an emergency situation.
And that would be item thirteen.
Okay, but we should have access to the local law, law prosecuting office.
Oh, I think we do, I totally think we do.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think...
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't wanna lose that, that ability.
No, we have, no, no one wants to take it either, seriously, so, all right, so, we will, that, item thirteen, we'll deal with that shortly. As far as this one, I would need a motion to, of support and...
I would make a motion, go ahead, Commissioner Barron.
Questions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want you to state the motion.
Yeah, exactly.
I kinda lost it.
We're getting there.
Me too.
Okay. What is your motion, sir?
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion that we allow to follow the same, the procedure that was just stated, to work our way through the attorneys and allow Ashley, once she's worked her way through, that she can get a hold of Mr. Graham if that's the last case, last case scenario.
Can I streamline this for you?
Please do, 'cause I confuse myself.
Okay, when appropriate, our administrator will be given the discretion to contact additional counsel if she talks with the chairman and they both determine that that's necessary. That would, that's the motion, that would be, assuming that we've already gone through MMRMA and Lauren.
That's my motion.
Will you support that, anybody?
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion, gentlemen.
I, I didn't hear anything about rules of engagement, letting the other commissioners know what's happening.
I think that, um, that can be written...
It's not automatic if it isn't in rating, if it isn't in rating, it doesn't have to happen.
That can be written in when we discuss item thirteen, or else we can put a clause in there now if you'd like. Bob will have to amend his motion possibly, but that's fine. So what is your, what is your clause, sir? What is your, what's your pleasure?
Well, just, just the rules of engagement, when something like this happens to this extent, that, you know, an email or something is, is forwarded to all the commissioners, like, do not reply, but we're looking at because of this, or...
So an advisory?
Whatever confidential information can be kept confidential, but whatever can be brought out there should be brought out there.
Could we have written into this policy that an advisory email will be sent to the rest of the, advising said commissioners that we will be seeking an opinion from counsel? Does that satisfy your concern? You can add to it if you'd like.
Just...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have support, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That'll pass, thank you. Okay, now we have the third item under unfinished business would be the airport manager's salary package.
This had been brought forward, I believe, for the past two meetings now, and we're just looking for approval for the package as presented.
I would make a motion that we would approve it as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron to approve the salary package as presented.
Would support that.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion, gentlemen.
Can, can you let the public know what we're increasing in that package from the previous airport manager?
I don't have her, the previous airport manager's salary on the top of my head.
Well, it's like, like about fifty-six thousand.
Okay, we have increased it from...
What is it at now? I'm just guessing.
It's a...
Is it a, a scale of...
It's a scale, sixty to seventy.
Okay. Any other additions in there that weren't in the last one?
No.
And is it advised that you offer this contract, there's no negotiating, or is there?
What do you mean, I'm negotiating? That's why the scale is there.
Okay, no, but what I'm saying is, they don't start work until they sign this contract, or isn't it an assigned contract? I, I'm just trying to make sure...
It's not a, it's not a contracted employee.
Okay, so they just accept what we offer, within that scale, we can negotiate, and it's either take it or leave it? Okay, I like that.
Okay, we have a motion, support, additional discussion, seeing none, I'd like a roll call on this, please.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. All right, we now have a sliding scale for our next airport manager, new business, payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is three hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Commissioner expenses of one thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents.
I would need a motion to pay our bills, so...
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson, discussion, gentlemen.
Just a, a brief information piece, the, last week, Monday, there was a court proceeding that involved three commissioners, Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Moyle, myself, on appealing the language of the recall petitions, and it was stated during that that the was, there was an expense to the tax... And it was stated during that that the was, there was expense to the taxpayers. We've received a voucher pertaining to this and it's for $69.43. The three commissioners mentioned each had to pay to, for the appeal, $175 apiece and, which is $525 and the actual cost to the county was just under $70. Just, it's just for information, this won't be, this will be something that'll be in next month's bills.
I believe, right.
I'll be happy to split it with you.
All right. Is that $70 the total cost or is it just specific cost that was billed at this point?
It's, it's the, from my understanding here, it's the, I believe it's the total cost.
Okay.
It's total on how the system's put together, you know. You can always dig into other things, but.
Okay, I just want a clarity on that.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I've been pretty busy the last two weeks and I, I skimmed through the ledger. Was there any, any attorney fees in there that I, that I might have missed that would be in there that is, okay, that's all I'm asking.
I mean, we always have attorney fees.
No, I meant not for court.
For day-to-day business, but not for the commissioners?
For the commissioners only.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, I need a roll call, please, on paying our bills.
Melner.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyle.
Yes. Item number two would be an RFP for PTP Electric and Water.
So Pioneer Trail Park is looking for an RFP on electric and water insulation projects. This will be located at the rustic area of the campground and then also electric all the way down to the four cabins at the Pioneer Trail Park. Because this project would be so large, we have to put it out for RFPs, we're looking for approval so we can send this out for bidding.
I would like to make that motion. Motion that we send out the RFP for the electric and water.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and support by Commissioner Melner with additional discussion from anybody? All those in.
I'd like to add also that this has already been a pre-approved project back in March 1st of, I believe it was '22, if, for the ARP money. So that's where this will be expensed out of.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
That's good.
All right, item number three would be an amendment to easements in Cornell. Mr. Mattson? And commissioners, do you have any questions starting off? There were two of us on the commission that should remember this when this was done in 2017. Mr. Melner, any questions?
Yeah.
I wasn't on the commission in '17. I was on it in 15 and 16.
You're the Lone Ranger.
Oh, okay, well, I guess I'm the old man on the grub. All right, very good, welcome, Mr. Mattson. The, in the case of the language on this, the county is the grantee and the owner of the property is the grantor and he's seeking, I believe, an amendment. Go ahead, sir.
I want to give you guys one more piece of information that took me a little bit to find, I knew it was around. This is what the county had signed, you'll notice that Ryan Bergman signed this on behalf of the county in 2017.
Thank you. That's a signature.
Basically, the packet that you got should have shown a couple of different things. There should have been an easement that was, this one here, that was filed. There were actually two easements and there should have been three easements that were filed. And this easement goes to the north and then it goes to the east. Here and a couple of months ago, you guys amended an easement that Warehouser, Pumpdrick Warehouser had put in that went north and that also went to the west. The same time that easement was put in, this one was. Warehouser actually put it together, but you'll see that there was an agreement between myself and the county at the time for the one that I just passed out that has, I should have saved one for myself, I guess, but it's the same as this one without a signature. Because what, what I worked for, this was like four and a half years trying to get this county piece of property set up and up here and who I dealt with through that time was Ryan Bergman and Commissioner Rivard. When we got down to the final, where the county, the big holdup on was how much property could the county actually buy through the trust fund, it was unlimited, but the county had to match it at 25%. So when you start dealing with a million dollars, 25% is pretty easy, $250,000 and that's pretty close to what it was. So the final layout, depending on what map you're looking for, is either in blue or red as the trust fund wanted it sent. So basically, if you use the red copy of the property, that was finally decided. It went down the section lines, but as you can see, there was an 80 in the southeast corner that was dropped down. And I brought that forward to the county when it turned out to be 1,400 acres and we also found the $220,000, so the county had a minimum investment to cover their costs. The right away that went to, or the easement that went to off the main one going north that went to the east, you can see this was the one that was accepted by the county, accepted by myself and accepted by the trust fund. I also was in the process of buying property there, but we wanted to settle the counties first because I wasn't really, didn't matter to me what 40 I purchased. So at the same time that this was put in and signed, I also offered the county an easement on the two-track that was going north for only timber production or administration, however you want to word it, and wildfire. And so basically, when, when this easement was put through, for some reason, it was all jammed into, into one. So if you look at the current easement, you'll also find out that the restrictions of who could do what are also in here. And the grantor, which is basically me, because I purchased that property, could erect gates, could put them up, and also there was no public access up and down that road. And that's in the, that's in the easement right now that was signed. I was approached in March, at the end of March, by an individual from the public who basically said they had looked this up and read it and they're going to go tear the gates down. Well, I told them, I said, I wouldn't go tear those gates down, but you go right ahead if you want. So I knew I had to bring it to this commission. I would have brought it in April or May, but as you guys well know, you had so much on your plate, including the annexation, that I just waited. But the county land starts to be used pretty heavily in September. And why is it used in September? Because of hunting. And that's basically, it was purchased to provide revenue, future timber sales to the parks, but also for the reason the county even got it was it's managed for game species and hunting and trapping. And that's how the extra points got there. And that all can be verified. So basically, I want to get back to the original easement that goes to the north just on the two-track. I'm not talking about the main road. So depending on what map you're looking at, either one, it's either the red one or the blue one, no, no change. It goes right through the middle of my property, public access is it all the time, there are no gates there, no problem whatsoever. And what you had to provide to the trust fund was access. And again, that's why I recommended that 80 be dropped down and that road went right around and hit that 80. So the public can go right there to the east or they can go to the north, a little bit to the west and access the whole rest of the county forest. So you can see what I put together. I'm asking for the two-track going to the north now to be separated, so it's straight out to the public, what the use is and, and, and the reason for it.
Commissioners, questions?
I, back months ago, when you took me up and introduced me to the forest and, and showed me around, I pulled it up on my GF, GIS, on my computer and just, just so I could see what it was like and kind of get a better understanding what you were talking about. And the, and I, on my GS, GIS I measured and from the access to the west to the access to the east as the crow flies is less than a mile. So you'd wind up, if we don't do this, you'd wind up having three accesses in less than a mile to the county forest. I don't think myself that that's necessary. That's, that's what I got to say, I guess, right at the moment.
Anybody else, gentlemen?
Yes, I was taken up there by Rory here back in the spring, it was still runoff time, and he pointed out these, what was taking place there. And as the easement says here, he is the grantor, so he can block this off if he so wishes, but he's bringing before us a, an amendment that is very good for the county forest and for the public. And I think we should grant that tonight.
Anybody else?
Yeah, me, again, real quick. You're still allowing access through that property for timber sales and for fire prevention, correct?
For the county land. And that's how Lime Timber Company took it out, you know, this year and a, year and a half ago in the winter. I let them come right through there and obviously, that's what I wanted to do. Because as you see the one that's signed by Ryan, that road is not highlighted.
Right.
Because it was not going to be there. I offered that up and somehow in August, when the final easement came out, it would have been Warehouser at the time, they just combined the whole thing. But you also saw where they put in there in a couple of spots, if you read that easement, where it talks about gates and who can do them, who can lock it, who can deny access, who can do that. And basically, that's the grantor who, as soon as I bought it, I became the grantor. So I still want the county to be able to go up in there and use it for certain things and you met the, and that's why this was signed. This one went to the trust fund, they okayed it, the county okayed it, I okayed it. And again, when Warehouser drew up these easements, obviously they screwed up on the one from the north to the west and also from the one from the north to the east. It was just that simple. I don't think anybody did it on purpose. And I know that Commissioner Rivard and Ryan, we sat through a lot of stuff together that they knew exactly what that, I was going to, after I purchased it, I was going to grant that easement to the county. So yes, I'm still willing to do that or, you know, it's in there. So I would, that's why I would like it amended. It spells out straight to everybody, very simple, what the two roads are for, how there's, how they're to be used, and it really gets rid of a lot of conflict that I see coming.
Can I just get a comment in on, since I wasn't here back in 2017 and I do have the documentation that shows all the access and, and the access that's in question is just heading north, a small portion off your property as an easement that has been blocked off for years already, correct or not?
Yeah, it, it was purchased, I believe, in September.
I mean, is there a gate up there now?
Yes, and it was put up a month after I purchased the property, so it's been there for four years.
And, and we're still having access through your property to get to the other points to this property?
Yes.
And this blocked road, all the other stipulations in this agreement will be enforced and we will still have access to, for timber or fire protection or anything else. It's just that you don't want it to be public access, but the, the main one will be.
Yeah, it was never meant to be and in the current.
Well, I see that here.
And in the current easement, it's not either.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just mentioning how I believe it right now and Commissioner Moyle's been on here a long, as if I said something wrong or a misunderstanding what I just said, please correct me.
No, I'm not going to, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, anything else? All those in favor, we do a motion or?
I'll make a motion that we receive this amended easement.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barron that we receive the, amend the easement. Do I have support on that motion?
I'll support it.
Support by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion. All those in, Mr. Melner, please.
I just want to know why most easements, they don't have an expiration date on them and neither does this one.
Correct. So which one are you looking at, John?
The one that's on the.
Are you looking at this original?
The original, the one that Dave Rivard signed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking.
You know, it starts on the 7th, June 30th of 2017, or then they cross it out and they put August. But I don't see no expiration or, you know, it's going to expire or anything else.
Correct, and would, and neither would the amendment, just an amendment to this one.
This is clarification, more clarification than anything is what you're asking for.
Yes.
Same thing we did like three, four months ago with Lime Timber.
Yeah.
To have that easement for logging and that.
And like I said, you see the signed document by the county, Ryan had the authority to sign it and it shows it exactly what it should have been. And a second easement that I wanted to give this county was going straight up and somehow it got combined, just like the easement that you guys changed for Lime Timber Company.
Okay, thank you.
John?
That's fine.
Very good. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, sir?
I'm opposed on that.
You are, okay, passing 4-1, thank you, sir. So we have, the next item is the resolution to approve the magistrate appointment of Samantha Henderson.
District Court Judge Parks had selected an individual Samantha Henderson from within district court to appoint as administrator magistrate and he just needs approval for the magistrate.
Commissioners?
I'll, I'll move that we approve his recommendation.
So we have a motion by Commissioner View to move on Judge Parks's recommendation. Do we have support? Support by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion.
Yeah, what, what happens if we wouldn't approve it? I mean, he has authority to hire anyways, right? I mean.
It's to fulfill her magistrate portion, so that just needs a resolution by the board.
Okay.
However.
But he could still hire her without our.
As an administrator for the district court, correct?
But not the magistrate part.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's very, very clear.
We have a motion, we have support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass unanimously. All right, item number five would be a credit card request for district court for Steve Parks for Samantha Henderson.
So in our prior meeting, we had requested a credit card for Steve Parks and because we don't, no, we do, sorry, no longer need that, we are requesting for the name to be switched to Samantha Henderson, who is now the administrator magistrate.
I'll, I'll move that we do that.
Motion by Commissioner View.
And I'll support.
Support by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion.
Yes, credit card policy, do we have one or does, does he have a separate one than what the county has?
Um, no.
Can, can that be sent to us in the next month or so? I, I'd like to see it, I, I don't know what it is, but.
$3,500 is the credit.
Well, I, I'd like to see the whole policy.
Okay.
If I could, thank you.
All right, the motion is on the floor, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. S. Henderson, transfer request for lump sum payout and to fill the deputy criminal clerk position.
So Samantha, who is now the district court administrator magistrate, she came from a, a union position. When transferring from a union to a non-union, we do a payout of all pay time off and such and then also we're requesting to fill her pos, old position.
Commissioners?
I would make a motion that we approve the lump sum payout and to fill the position.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron with additional discussion, anybody? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Resignation of P. Lacoste, request for a lump sum payout to fill the deputy accounting clerk position and I would like to send that person a letter, please thanking them for their service. What is your pleasure, Commissioner?
I move we accept the resignation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron for the acceptance of the resignation with the payout and letter. Support, supported by Commissioner Melner, any additional discussion?
Yeah, is this the one where they were financially better off going somewhere else because of the county's pay scale or is it just retirement? I, I thought I read something in there where someone was, was, was moving on to, for, they loved their job, but the pay wasn't enough to support their family.
Not that I was, I am aware of.
Okay.
I don't believe this was. I don't believe this was.
Must've been reading in the wrong book.
We have a motion and support. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, um, out of county travel for U.P. ACC.
You forgot what?
Oh, did I, what did I?
Number eight.
Oh, resolution addressing the ordinance policy, I'm sorry, gentlemen. The ordinance policy, excuse me.
So in prior meetings, we brought up the addressing ordinance and policy. Um, in order to fulfill and actually change all of these, we just need a resolution from the board. And then it has, the whole, um, ordinance has to be posted with the newspapers. So we're just, it's a.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Commissioner Barron.
I'll support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion.
This, this is ordinance policy?
Correct.
Not, not, oh, the address.
The addressing.
The address.
We're, we're changing that from years ago, we're, we're adding something to this.
Well, we already approved to add something now, but this is just the resolution stamping on top of it. You had already approved, um, it was over at the service center meeting when Jen and Jody, I believe, came up.
It was the rural commission.
Yeah. We, I was at that meeting and I have something to say about it, dear.
No, we did this as the board of commissioners.
Oh.
We approved the change in the addressing ordinance and policy when Jody, over at the chamber, I'm sorry. I didn't say the service.
I'm talking about a different meeting then.
Oh, okay.
That had to do with addressing.
Okay.
And the ordinance.
Okay. Um.
So we're voting on the resolution?
I don't know if there was any changes, there was no changes proposed from that meeting, if it was.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
It was just informative and what's, I, I have a little bit to say under Commissioners' report.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Um, now, we had out of county travel for U.P. ACC.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Commissioner Melner.
I'll support it.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, discussion. All those in favors?
Well, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I mean, hate to make these comments, but it, I think it'll help in the long run if we get a policy on, I, I missed, I feel was an important, uh, out of county meeting because we didn't have a commission meeting within a period of, uh, it was in July. We only had like one meeting in July. And I, I was requesting to have a special meeting to go to this, uh, zoning ordinance and stuff. And I, I couldn't get any support to, to figure out how I can get permission to go to it because I, I, I went out there and talked to them and it would have fit right in to the scope of what we might be coming into at the end of the year on building and zoning and all this other stuff. It, it had really good information and they wouldn't let me into the actual meeting. But I also didn't know how to get permission to go there. And, and John gave me some pointers, but he said it has, if we had a policy on something like that where we could, I, I don't know if you can just have an administrator make a decision with the chair on certain circumstances where we could okay a commissioner or two to go to something. This was just in Harris, Michigan anyways. It wasn't a long ways away. And I think we missed a, a great opportunity from the people I've talked that went at it, that we, would enlighten us to help us at the end of the year. I, I just wanna throw that comment out there, if we could do something. That's a different day, but.
Ashley, is there something we could work on that or develop a, uh, it sounds like a rare case, but maybe we could develop a policy?
It is your own policy and, I mean, we can work on amending the policy.
Yeah. We can just look at it, just see if there is something in case it happens again. It's rare, but it happened.
Very good. So we have a motion on the floor in a second. Um, I believe we haven't voted on this yet, correct?
Nope.
All right.
If I, if I may say a quick.
Yep.
About this. Um, I understand what Commissioner View is saying. Uh, I had a similar sit, situation not, not too long ago. Um, and I guess what I did is, this was down in Lansing, it was, I felt it was important enough that I, I should be there. And I, uh, I went and got it done, came back and asked for, uh, to be reimbursed for it, um, after the fact.
Sure.
But my.
And you were, correct?
And I was, yes. And, but my thought, when I, when I took that on, my, my feelings were that I felt this was important and if the board didn't pay for it, I felt it was important for me to be there, so I would have paid for it out of pocket. Um, I think if you've got something you feel that strongly about, go to it, come to the board afterwards, explain yourself. Board's pretty fair on that kind of stuff. Just my opinion.
Thank you, sir. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Um, item ten would be, uh, out of county travel for MAC.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner and support by Commissioner View on out of county travel by MAC, additional discussion.
Is that the October first to the third, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is it this year?
Kalamazoo.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and we have, uh, support, additional discussion. Sing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Um, okay. Do we have or do we cancel the, uh, October the third meeting would be item eleven?
For what reason?
So we are requesting, um, October has a statutory meeting, so there would be three meetings that month. And with October being the same day that MAC would be finishing up, we are requesting, if you guys want to have or cancel that.
What are, what are the meeting dates of that month? Just the third and the what?
Seventh and.
The seventh?
Well, in September, in September, we meet on the nineteenth. So it would be a whole, whole month before we meet again.
We, we have a, for October, it's the third, tenth, and the seventeenth are the scheduled dates.
Okay, then it's only, yeah.
So the question is, uh, is, are you accept, will you accept a statutory meeting as the tenth, on the tenth is our first meeting of the month, or should we meet on the third?
I.
The seventh is a statutory meeting?
The tenth.
The third is.
The tenth.
Oh, okay.
The tenth is the statutory. Third, third, tenth, and seventeenth.
I don't know who's planning on going to Kalamazoo for this conference. And my guess is you're not gonna come back from Kalamazoo and attend a commission meeting in the same night, so.
No.
Well, this is the exception that Commissioner View is looking for. I would move that we, uh, not have the October third meeting.
I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barron, support by Commissioner View, additional discussion.
We're still gonna have two meetings that month.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
So this would be simply scuttling the meeting on the third, replacing it on the tenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Please excuse me. Okay, uh, the, uh, the airport, uh, is it Prene and New Hoff contract with, uh, rehabilitating the airfield and also pavements cracking and sealing. We have, uh, support information on that, please.
Um, this is just the contract between them. Um, all procedures have been followed with, um, RFP with, uh, Prene and New Hoff, they have selected the contractor. Uh, I just need a signature on it.
So you, you would be, motion would be to authorize the board chair to sign?
Correct.
I have a question, there's, in our information, there's, uh, this item that was part one, part two. It's, is the motion the only thing to read for those?
It's because it's a five-hundred-page document.
I knew there was a lot of pages.
Yeah. So that's why there's part one, part two.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if it made any difference with the motion. All right, thank you. That's, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View, uh, to allow, uh, the board chairs to be the signator for this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I just want clarity for the public. Is, is this the, the final project they're gonna do before we switch over to Meeden Hunt? Do you know offhand?
No.
So they're, they're contracted for how long then?
Um, until all their projects are done, they still have the SRE building to complete.
Okay. Do you have a projected, like, is it a year from now and we're gonna have two, two consultants then? Just the new projects that go to Meeden Hunt?
Correct.
Okay, and when they're done, have we sent them a letter saying that we hired Meeden Hunt so they're notified of that change eventually?
We had just received the letters, the templates to send off on Monday.
Okay, but we didn't send them nothing.
It was on Monday, yes.
Oh, okay.
Right. We have not sent them anything.
Okay.
Um, also, so we have the SRE building, what I just wanna explain, it's the snow removal equipment building. And they're in the project, uh, we have the RFP, we did not receive any bids on that. So we're looking at, um, in the spring because we were requesting for it to be done prior to winter. And everybody was busy, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not challenging anything, I'm, I'm just trying to get clarity for everybody at, at, at this meeting, that's all. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, we've already voted, so I guess that's right, um, that passes post, comment is post facto. Um, very good. Item number thirteen would be rules and procedures. And, um, what I originally wanted to do is just kinda recap a couple of the things I, Mr. Graham reviewed the rules and procedures pro bono, he didn't charge us anything. Um, and if you'd like to amend in there or put it in there that, you know, commissioners can talk to, uh, our prosecutor or, what is your pleasure on the language, Mr. View?
For the rules and procedure?
Yes.
I would like to do them in-house as much as possible before we get a professional opinion if we came up with a legal way of wording it. That's, that's my, I think we're very capable of looking in updated old antiquated policies with in-house before we throw it out to, um, a, a more expensive attorney. But it can be, be overviewed after we get done. And that could save a lot of money. That's my opinion.
Are, are we looking right now to change any rules and procedure? I don't sense that we are. I think this was just a, uh, because nothing stops, uh, and she certainly, Lauren, has been very open to phone calls, questions, you know, visits.
Very, very, yes.
I, I think that if I remem, if I'm gathering from the earlier conversation, the, the concern was that the commissioners are able to go to, uh, the prosecuting attorney, Ms. Wickman, without seeking board approval.
She's been very open to that.
Yes, yes, I've, I've talked with her several times. I think in, in my mind, that's, that's the only change that I see at this time or, or stipulation that I like to see put in that, that if we, as commissioners, feel the need to talk to her about an issue, that we can, we can go and engage with her without seeking board approval.
I thought we do that already.
We do.
We do, just.
But it's, you wanna clarify it.
But just, just clarifying it from what we just did for Ashley.
Right. So in our rules procedure, it says, "In the event a county commissioner deems that the service, service of legal counsel is necessary, county board approval is required prior to contacting the attorney."
That would be for a paid opinion and we get paid opinions from Lauren.
That's, that's, I didn't hear that stipulated once she just read, though.
Right. So that's.
Well, well, my contention is that maybe we should just, every once in a while, when we have a personnel committee or, or whatever, we just do one or two of them, uh, policies and procedures and say, yeah, it's okay, it's not okay, it needs to be updated. Put our opinion in there, bring it to the board, get all, get everybody's idea on it. And then if we have to get the legality of it, then it's time to send it to an, to an attorney to make sure it falls within the laws of, of the land.
But, but at, at this point.
That's all you do with things.
Right, but at this point, the way I'm hearing it is we as commissioners cannot even go talk to, uh, Ms. Wickman without board approval. And I think that we should have the right to go and talk to Ms. Wickman, uh, about whatever subject, uh, without it coming to the board.
But we should look at it through the, through the committee first and, and get that in there. We, just due to status quo right now, uh, because the clarification of it meant for, Chair Montreal said that it for paid. So it doesn't say that in there, but we have a past practice where we have been actually talking to Lauren without saying, coming to the board and asking for. I, I mean, let's get it clarified the way you want, but let's not just do it right now.
Would you like a personnel meeting to, uh, look at this?
Yes, that, that's what I'm asking Ashley, if some, the next one we have, we can throw that on the agenda.
I don't believe this qualifies as a personnel item. Because it's a rules and procedure of the commissioners. So it's between the commissioners as a whole of the board. It's not a committee function.
Can we make it?
We don't have a finance, it wouldn't be under finance, personnel, any of our standing committees.
We should have a statutory committee that handles stuff like this anyways, that's why we're so far behind.
We have, that's the board.
That would be the board commissioners.
That would be the board.
No, but I mean, to oversee it prior to coming to the board, because it can be very time consuming. Well, it's just like the personnel committee and the finance committee. You, you bring your recommendations.
Yes, but we have a workshop on the first meeting of the month, this would be a good thing to have.
For the commissioners informational workshop, we could make that the subject then, if you'd like, for September.
I have no issue with it, I'm just saying it's.
All right, very good. Um, we will take no action then on item thirteen, other than the fact that look for this, the first meeting in September as, uh.
It has to be your issue that we talk about.
Go ahead, sir.
He was just.
Sidebar here.
Oh, that's right, no problem, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, no problem. So, all right, so moving on to number fourteen, which is parks maintenance.
Um, I have brought this before both the personnel and the finance committee. Um, personnel approved their job description and the finance committee approved the pay for the individual. I did notice, however, that in the job description, it says a grade eleven, that should be grade twelve, that's the same as our maintenance technician currently. Um, so that is an error that I'm looking for. And that, and grade twelve was approved during the finance meeting. However, it was just not reflected in, under the board packet for tonight.
Misprint.
It was just a misprint.
Okay.
I picked up that.
So I just want that to be noted and I'm looking for approval.
Commissioners?
I would move the approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll support. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melner, support by Commissioner Barron on the approval of this. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Item 15, which has been put into the agenda, would be the stipend recommendations by the Personnel Committee. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's a twofold recommendation. First recommendation is that all job descriptions add the following statement. The above statements are intended to describe the general nature and level of work being performed by the personnel assigned into this classification. They are not to be constructed, I'm sorry, construed as an exhaustive list of all duties performed by personnel to classified, meaning that it's just like an overall encompassing of job duties for job descriptions.
Something comes up, they have to do it.
Right. And then the other portion would be Commissioner Melner's stipend request for the commissioners. The finance, or I'm sorry, the finance, I believe, was it finance or personnel?
Stipend request?
Yeah, for travel, travel and board meetings and such.
Correct.
Upgrade of the compensation package for what the commissioners have done has been stagnant for many, many years, and we go to other meetings and...
Has that gone through Finance?
Yes, but no action was taken on it, so we'll probably have to wait on that.
I'm looking for approval on the first statement to be added to all job descriptions.
So we'll move.
Support. And for discussion, gentlemen, anything?
No, I think Ashley did a good job. She kind of brought a lot of that language here, and it'll kind of help us with, we ran into at the last meeting where we had to pay somebody extra money without doing extra work just because it wasn't listed in the job description. We're not trying to make people do more work, but we want to be able to get the work done if it can be done without extra.
So, that I understand, that we have two recommendations here. We're voting on the first one, correct?
Yes.
All right, very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will pass. All right, now the second one.
The second one, Finance was talking, go ahead, Commissioner, very nicely.
Well, it just, it was just brought before us, and we moved it to the full board to discuss the compensation for meetings and travel.
So this is regarding per diem as well?
Per diem, yes.
Okay, so what is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I would think that if we're working on rules and procedures as part of a workshop, this could be an item that would be part of that, too.
You want to move the issue of per diem on to the first of September? Very good. Then we will do that, and no additional action is needed in reference to item 15.
We'll just table it to the next meeting.
Very good, sir. Do you need a motion for that, Ash? Ashley?
Just no action taken.
Okay, very good. Okay, now we're on to, there is no six, okay, so that should be the final motion, am I correct, or is...
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay. General public comment, you have the microphone for three minutes if you wish to address the board.
Regarding Agenda Item Number Seven, the resignation of P. Lacoste, I believe Commissioner View had asked regarding the money situation, and it was said, "No, that didn't have any part of her resignation." But I'd just like to read her resignation note. Said, "I would like you to know the decision to leave District Court is one that I do not make lightly. I have accepted new employment to begin October 1. This resolution is one that I have had to make concerning my family and financial situation. I appreciate everything that working in the District Court has given me, and if it were not for the monetary difference, I would not be considering this employment advancement." So Commissioner View was right. Secondly, I would like to say that I went back to the RFP bid opening for Scott Graham and watched that meeting again, and Commissioner Moyle's quote said, "We're not going to be using Scott Graham nilly-willy, and we can't use Scott Graham unless we have a direct vote of the board." So I'm not going to call him and say, "Hey, we need you. We need to have a direct vote of the majority of the board. This is just a safety option. We will continue to work with Lauren Wickman." I emailed Lauren Wickman earlier and asked her if she had been asked to review the rules of procedure. She said she had not. And I would just like to know, how did Scott Graham know to review our rules of procedure? Was he sent an email? Was he, was there a phone call? Was there a text message? There doesn't seem to be anything on record. So did he just do it nilly-willy? Of all the things that he has to consider, you know, with being our municipal attorney? So I would just like clarification on that. Thank you.
General public comment.
My name is Anthony Seymour from Delta County. I'm on the mailing list for the meeting agenda. We, as everybody knows, I think that everybody heard, 417 pages were in the agenda tonight, and we were asked if we wanted to make a comment on any agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know how anyone, not even AI, could review 419 pages in 15 minutes and have a worthy question or comment on it. That's, it's insane. If people are on a mailing list for any kind of meeting agenda, we need to have it a lot sooner than 15 minutes before the meeting. That's all.
Thank you, sir. I'll have a comment.
Before I start, I also thought 415 pages before the board meeting was ridiculous. Most employers have a backup system when somebody's on vacation. Is this working? Okay. Zoom was eliminated April 4. Instead, we were told to submit public comments to the administrator. No parameters were given, no deadlines were imposed. I submitted a public comment via email to Ms. Young during the last board meeting. It was not read. When I followed up the next day, Ms. Young told me that she leaves her office at 4:00 PM and does not check her emails during the meeting. Think about that for a minute. Public comments at the end of a meeting provides the public a mechanism to comment on the actions taken during said meeting. How does submitting a public comment prior to a meeting even make sense? I would like to remind Mr. Moyle of his own written statements. April 6, quote, "Given the fact that you are ambulatory impaired, I will bring this issue forth again on your behalf." April 13, quote, "I have been speaking to other commissioners as well as our IT guy, still trying to see what can be done." That was four months ago. I believe the board chair is intentionally moving towards eliminating as much public participation as possible. First, Zoom was eliminated. Secondly, Mr. Moyle's sidekick stood at this podium during the last meeting and advised the board to eliminate one of the agenda opportunities to provide public comment. Was he planning to voice this so-called concern? Am I being overly paranoid? All I know is the trust of the chair has been broken.
Thank you.
I'm Teresa Roth, by the way.
General public comment, please. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. I'm also on the board of directors of the Delta Conservation District. I heard you pass a motion that modified an easement. That easement, through the property that Mr. Mattson just asked you to modify through his property, was the grantor of that, as far as I remember, was Warehouser. Warehouser gave you a grant for that, and it included public access by the county's decision through that easement to the east side. But the problem here is that there's no rec, I mean, the information that was passed out today, I waited all day to see what that easement was about, never saw it. And I saw on TV that Mr. Mattson handed out information. I just have to ask, why didn't you do due diligence on what the nature of that easement that you already have is? Heard Mr. Peterson says, "We have other access points into that property." That's 1,400 acres. Bob, I'd ask you, on your piece of property, have you ever given up an ingress egress easement?
Never had one.
Never had one, got it. So why wouldn't you do your due diligence? Because the public had rights to go up that road that Mr. Mattson is asking you to modify to just be for forestry and fire control. But Mr. Mattson has had it gated since he bought it. He bought it right after you got your property from Warehouser. Warehouser granted you an easement up through his property. Mr. Mattson wants you to modify it so that he never has to deal with the public, ever. And you just said, "Okay, good enough." The late hour at which this was presented to you today gave nobody, and myself included, the ability to review it. And I just sat down with Mr. Mattson to say, "Who threatened to rip out those gates?" He said, "A friend of yours." But he wouldn't tell me who it was. So I would respectfully ask you to rescind that motion, table it until you can do your due diligence on what rights of the public to access 1,400 acres in Cornell that you just gave away, and to determine whose gates those are. Because I know at least one of those gates was put in before the property transferred, and the money was refunded to one of Rory's property owners. He bought part of that property with his former board chair, Jack Herrick. And I know from looking at QuickBooks that Mr. Herrick was paid at least $5,000 to do work on the existing gates on the forest. But this stuff is so all thrown together that it's going to take a forensic accountant to unravel it. And I've been pounding away, Mr. Peterson knows, to answer the question. $53,000 last year, paid in bonuses. When you were chair, did you authorize it or not? And you say, "I can't recall."
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Chris Williams, Ford River Township. I witnessed tonight one of the most pathetic things I've ever seen, and it was the manipulation of four of you commissioners to vote against the betterment of a piece of property and access for the public to that piece of property. You did not think it through. You, Mr. Peterson, you, Mr. View, and you, Barron, all said that you went out to the property and that Rory Mattson took you around and showed you everything. Well, of course Rory Mattson showed you everything. Why don't you go with one of the people who have an issue with it, and we can show you what the issues are? But no, you are absolutely 100% in bed with Rory Mattson. Why? I don't understand. Because you have a hell of a lot of constituents who have issues that you are absolutely disregarding because you want to take care of one individual who you like. I like people, too, but guess what? I will hold them to account when they pull a bunch of crap like this. This person stood up here, Rory Mattson, he lied to you. He lied, and you sucked it up like you suck up a Coke. I mean, you are unbelievably, you don't see it, you don't care, you don't give a rat's ass about your constituents. Nobody does when they do shit like that.
What's your language? General public comment.
I was just wondering how this board feels about Belarus' DEI policy. Does this board still support them in their expansion, knowing that they have a very, very strong DEI policy?
General public comment, please. General public comment. Last call, please, general public comment. Mr. Hyken?
Mr. Hyken, Esconaba. Let me give you all a warning, those narrow-minded people who don't like hearing words, they don't want to hear, may want to get up and leave, because they're going to hear a bunch of words they don't want to hear. Mr. Melner, would you like to stand up and sneak out so you don't hear those words? Mr. Barron?
Keep it quiet in the audience, please, or I will ask you to leave the room. He was quiet for you, please be quiet for him.
I've spent my time to take care of their...
Please continue, sir.
Oh, okay. Mr. Barron, last month you gave us a talk about the roots of our constitution. I appreciate...
Could you lean into the microphone? They can't hear you there, sir.
I appreciate that. I think it was very educational and very enlightening. Unfortunately, some of the close-minded people around didn't want to hear those words. I don't know why, they're afraid of them, but once again, perhaps Mr. Melner would answer that during his comments. Mr. View, in interest of clarity for people in the community, how about clarity in the community? Would you care to discuss the DDA of Gladstone? Would you like to discuss the $6,000 you had to reimburse them after you were caught stealing from them? Because frankly, Mr. View, that is reprehensible.
Stop for a second. That could be... I will clear this room if you do not listen to this. Sit down. All right, stop. If they can't control themselves, we're going to adjourn. We've got everything done.
Right at the bottom of your agenda.
It's on the notes. Dave, take your five-minute recess. Don't end public comment.
That's up to you guys.
No, 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 no. You can't do it. You just take a recess, let people calm down. Same rules apply to everybody.
Yes, they do. So that's why I've asked you again to be quiet.
You can't cut off public comment, don't do it to yourself.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen? You want to continue?
Yes.
All right, well, we're going to do that, then, under the order...
Let him talk.
If he can, he will. But that means people need to respect decorum.
And no personal attacks.
We don't want to attack people.
Personal attacks have been happening a lot.
If I may add something?
Yes, sir.
There was no outbreak from this crowd, from a few would be considered personal attacks by Christine Williams just a few minutes ago.
What does a personal attack have to do with your business? It doesn't have to do with your business.
There's no back and forth here. If we cannot have decorum, there's no point in continuing this meeting. The business of the county is done. Did you want to continue?
Let's take a five.
All right, we'll take five minutes. Use the bathroom, get a drink, whatever you'd like. Five-minute recess, we'll reform. Will you start with your time back up again? Have a seat.
So if we have, if we have to adjourn the meeting, that's what I want to do.
There's no point arguing with a crowd, I mean, it's just pointless.
But I asked.
Yeah, I know.
No, I...
I was thinking of using this one.
Probably did, then. I have no idea.
Giving you a bit.
Is this mine?
Do you want to give me a copy of that?
But then there's also this one.
This is, this is what I heard. This is the original.
I was thinking of using both of them.
Yeah, but I don't, I ask for coverage.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
With the people...
You can have this, Joe.
Joe, I have an extra minute.
You can have that. You're welcome. Yep.
Yeah, Joe? Pointed out this. I'm giving you the number of this.
But we are here.
But this is really...
So what is your pleasure to continue? It's not going to be...
I have to say, I mean, I have so many...
Well, no, it's definitely one question. I'm seeing if we don't have a crowd, if we have a crowd that...
Don't stop public comment. I don't want to...
Thank you. Actually, they all have to follow the same...
I agree. Just let the guy speak out. Well, let him speak.
That's the nuclear option. I'd rather not.
Wow. You can see the people who come in and speak public comment and it'll be recorded with all the... Your addicts. Think about it. You can still have that public comment.
I think it would be actually less, we've, the minutes we've met our business, I don't want to start public comment either, but I'm not going to hurt you with the word.
No, but if it's pointless. Public comment, or we just did a commission, because that's where it's supposed to be at anyways, not in public, not...
Well, I understand that, that's not what we're debating.
The reason, the reason I...
Can we call this meeting back to order here?
I was thinking about carrying our soul, Christine.
That can be dangerous.
I was also thinking about... I was just expecting you to have handed it to us to help her improve. It's hard to communicate. But God willing... It's a gift. How long have we been in recess? We're past the five minutes.
All right, very good. Folks, we will read...
Twelve minutes. Four? No, it's only four.
In another minute, we will go back to order. Mr. Hyken, you may begin. I'm not trying to stop anyone from communicating from the microphone. You have that right, no one's going to take it away. But I cannot argue with a mob, I'm sorry. And so whether we stay in session or not is up to you. If we do it, we'll be with decorum.
Your constituents are the mob?
An angry group of people is, will not run the meeting, I'm sorry. If you want this to continue, please speak from the microphone. I don't like them either, but that means we will wait until we have, everyone holds themselves to the same standard. I can't argue with a group of angry people, it's just pointless. So I'm asking you to not, from your seat, from the microphone, please. We are back in session. You may continue, sir.
Thank you. Mr. View, you will be held accountable for your actions. As a commissioner, as a member of our community...
He had a minute, 10 seconds left, I'm timing him right now.
Speaking of microphone...
Well, we should probably go to about two minutes, being as they're...
Per, continue, sir, please.
Mr. View, you should be held accountable for your actions. Your integrity and your honesty are part of the reason you sit there as a commissioner. Your constituents elected you. I'm curious if they understood and knew of your practices, of your actions that are reprehensible, stealing money from your very own community. I find it absolutely disgusting for you to sit there and accept our money to line your pockets.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, general public comment, please.
I just have a question about, Mr. Moyle.
Speak your name, please, ma'am.
Sandy Solvi, Ford River. I just have a question about your radio interview. I was listening to it, and on the interview, you said that Ashley is doing her job and... Um, I was listening to it, and on the interview, you said that Ashley is doing her job and Emily's job, so it's saving our county a lot of money. But I seem to remember that we're going to be hiring an extra person, an assistant to help Ashley, which I think is right. And I'm just wondering what happened to personnel, because wasn't Ashley the personnel person? So, I'm kind of confused where the money is being saved still, and I'd like some clarity, because I think it was a little bit dishonest on the radio.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, general public comment. General public comment. Last call, very good.
Kylie Kellashack. So, a lot of emotion in here tonight, mostly up here, honestly. Feeling a lot of hostility towards each other, trouble in paradise. What I want to know is, are public attacks or attacks here, we're good, we're good? To do that, is that acceptable, the way he just got up and said that to Mr. View? Because if it is, I have some of my own, so I would like to know, I would actually like an answer on that, if that's acceptable or not. Thank you.
Okay, next, general public comment. Last call, general public comment. Very good.
Seymour, Delta County, is...
Can you speak, sir, already?
Oh, I don't know, did I, did you...
Sit down, please. Sit down, please.
I figured, on agenda items.
Sir, you are, you've spoken.
Well, you did.
Did you speak or not? If you didn't speak, I'm not giving, if you didn't speak, then speak, if you've spoken, you've spoken.
He did speak.
He did speak, then, I'm sorry, sir, you would have to sit down.
Okay, I'll just, uh, just make a note that personal attacks are now allowed on the board.
Thank you, sir, please sit down. He spoke. This is general public comment. You get one chance. Okay, anybody else who hasn't spoken, general public comment, please. That would be closed, Commissioner's concerns, Mr. Peterson.
Well, I guess as far as this personal attacks thing. Next, next meeting, first meeting in September, we'll be having a workshop going over rules and procedures, this will be one of the things we'll cover. And get, get a solid ruling on it. I want to thank, uh, thank everybody that when I went to the restroom, allowed me to have my privacy, appreciate that. Other than that, right now, I have nothing to say.
Mr. View?
I have quite a bit to say. I'll start with the least most important, if that's an oxymoron, so be it. I don't know where the $6,000 figure comes from. It's not factual. Never been charged with anything when I was on the DDA, or even a Gladstone City Commission. Lots of accusations, no charges. I've never been convicted of anything. It's kind of neat to see the internet come to the board, where people can make comments without backing them up. I can assure you, people know me, I got elected here because they understand the effort I put out to try to do what's right. Maybe you don't agree with me all the time, and I don't force myself on anyone, but I do my due diligence on every issue that I have to make a decision on, for the betterment of all people in the county. I am willing to offer you to come into my office and discuss where you got this information, and give my side of the story. Because a lot of times, when you hear only one side, like I used to tell my kids, when I was small, I caught a little fish. I'm old enough now that fish is this big, and that's what usually happens. So, not disappointed in you doing this, I'm very upset on how it can still come up as an issue without anybody checking into the facts, because you're talking, eight years ago, an issue happened, but not the way it's being told. So, thank you for bringing it up and letting me enlighten the crowd today. Now to important business. An active commissioner. Today, I attended what they called a, I was invited to attend Great Lake Recovery Roundtable Discussion. Important issue in our county, opioids, settlement fund discussion. Dana Nessel, our Attorney General, was there, I had lots of conversations with her. Catholic Social Services representatives, of course, Great Lake Recovery counselors and administrators, Escanaba City Council members, and many sheriff people, all trying to help our community with the drug problem. But just to enlighten you, the settlement right now is $1.6 billion. Who'd be divided by 83 counties, and we're one of the counties. I tried to get a dollar amount for us, but I, I, they didn't have that figure. It will be divided, not by how big you are, but how bad your problem is with the opioid crisis. So it's going to be basically, let me move this note here. Population is, is one of the factors, number of pills prescribed for your area or given out by, you know, like the Walmarts, the Walgreens and that in an area. And the other thing is the number of overdoses in your community, the cases of overdose. It's kind of scary when you hear all this stuff, and I'll tell you what, these people are really on the side of getting these people out into the community in recovery and everything else. The money will be front-loaded, that means they have an 18-year plan to get, we're going to be getting this money for 18 years. You can even save it for a bigger project, or if you want to do something. I mean, I was excited to hear this, I hope the people in the community can really listen and see how much we have the ability to help the, you know, our families, our friends, you know, stuff like that with this drug overdose stuff. But, and it can be used creatively. So if you come up something that you can use it for, like mental health, temporary housing after rehabilitation, skills. Handoff student loans for employees that go into this field in our area to stay here, because a lot of people, when they, we're pretty low-paid in our county. And people come here, get a little bit of experience, and where do they go? Little bigger city, a bigger outfit that can pay more and stuff like that. So this'll, these people said this will help in that area, keeping good qualified people to help our, our counselors and stuff. Implementing different jail programs, so there's going to be a lot of creative, creativity there from Sergeant Jeff Hanson. Transportation issues, people getting their social security card, transportation, giving them hope. And the fun part about this, and the most important part, your great county board will decide how it is spent. No, I'm serious about it. I have a lot of information, I have a lot of questions and contacts that I made at this meeting, and I will sit up here during the whole time when that money comes, and I will continue to give my voice, my research, historical data, on where I think it should be spent in our county. And the other potential, as this program goes on over these 18 years, there will be another influx of money that they figure maybe $200 million dollars more. So we can get some good programs for our community on drug abuse, or whatever you want to call it. Right after that meeting, they asked me to stay for another meeting. And I attended what they called the Restorative Justice Program, different people, Attorney General was still in this one. I didn't take as many notes on this, but they're looking for programs to work with the, with the inmates, because they, uh, Sergeant Jeff Hanson's talked about the three tiers of the criminal system on how it works, and he basically said punishment, jails, a deterrent, and we lack in rehabilitation. So he's trying to come up with programs that can be supported by money given from the state that would help Michigan Works coming in partnership, partnering ship with successful programs to educate people, skilled trades, there's a virtual program where people in jail, they, they can't weld, but they can virtually do everything like, like a welding class. It sounded pretty exciting, they got sobriety court, same way with transportation issues, the Angel Program. And the main goal is to get these people productive in the community and reduce crime. And I think that's the goal of our commission, and everybody in our society is looking for doing that. So that's, I mean, I have a lot of information, I don't want to spend up all your time. But them are the, the key issues that I took from that meeting. So, all right, I also attended the Escanaba Township Planning Commission meeting in the last couple of weeks. The, and the Escanaba regular meeting. The biggest thing I got out of there was they upgraded their fees, pretty much almost some issues double. I, I don't know how the citizens feel about that, but maybe stuff like that will end up coming to our board, because the cost to do things now have increased tremendously. So that's, that's where they went, I also attend the Board of Health meeting in September, they still have their drive-through. Flu clinic, I forgot the dates, I should have marked it down, but I'll, I'll bring it up at the next meeting and have it for you. Okay, the building and grounds, we already talked about that, I attended that, Corey does a good job. I really quiz him a lot, like I, I do the commission here when he comes to, to them meetings, and he doesn't mind. Personnel committee, same thing. We get pretty fiery there, but in the end, we, we go all smiling. Okay, the update, uh, this is the, uh, Jen Peterson and Jody, Jody Norman, we had a meeting at the, uh, County Garage. And it talked about the fire, fire signs. There was a lot of confusion between all the townships, and I don't want to reiterate that we have a new leadership, and that's where the confusion comes, it's not, the confusion is, we don't have somebody in the county right now to take this project as the staging place, like our administration office, and I thought, and me and John talked about it, that we would bring it up and let Ashley think about it as being the contact person, your office, once all the information is given by these people on what they're looking at, because we need to make sure that the placement is in the same spot, there's, they're color-coded from county to county, they're asking for this. They don't have to follow this, but we're trying to get, it's our ordinance, so they want our help and not to drop the ball, so they have one central place to call for all this information. The, uh, the road signs, some are being paid by the road commission, other ones that have changed will have to be paid by, by the townships. So there's a lot of cost factor, we can probably pool and see if, they got two places right now, and I went to a MAC meeting, and I have a third place I'm going to offer to give to Ashley, so we can get some cost on, on the, on the signs. So, Ashley, just let me know if, if that's something you can think you can do. Airport Advisory Board, I went to that, uh, we talked a lot about E A S, so if you ever hear that, and I keep asking what that means, essential air service. And then we talk about C I T A, in case you see that in the reports, because a lot of times, that isn't defined what it means. Does anyone know what C I T A means? It's Security Identified Display Area. And, and we're going to be upgrading to larger aircrafts for a while, I don't know how long, but, uh, we have to get to C I T A specifications, specifications, so whatever that costs, that'll be passed on later on when I find that out. Also, we need plane watchers, remember they talked about a plane watcher for, for the bigger crafts? I don't know if that entails us hiring another employee or jobbing it out to a private company, but every plane that goes out there, that takes off or lands, needs a plane watcher. Look that up and see what that means, it just means somebody's there as security while the plane is, uh, being in, in the airport. And it's about three to four hours daily is what we were tossing around. We also talked to a company called F-3 Airport. They give us an opportunity to discuss and look at management options for the airport. We didn't discuss anything basically about going anywhere that way, but it, it's some options that we'll have if we run into not being able to get an airport manager. And finally, the, uh, they already mentioned that we're going to do the final couple of candidate, uh, the final two candidates this Friday, or hopefully a new manager. Gladstone City of Commission Meeting I attended. Talked about the DDA. It's T I F, Tax Increment Financing. They provided a nice, informational meeting that focused on resource and insights to promote and stimulate economic growth without raising local property taxes. What DDD, what DDA, what they do is, they encourage building in their community, but you have to have property to build, so Gladstone changed their DDA district in 2009. There's rehab too, but this is where the big bucks come in, in 2009, they changed their DDA area, and they have abundance of area that can be built in, in the DDA area, and they capture the tax base to put back in the community to pursue local good for the community and the business area. It's, it's based on, it's just a rudimentary definition that I'm giving you. Okay, I, I still have a couple more, I, I just think it's important for me to tell you what I do, so you know where I, I'm coming from. I went up to the VA, the Veteran Memorial Wall, Moving Wall in Manistook on Friday, me and my wife. I met with the VSO officer and the Veterans Administration, two different entities, I learned a lot there. I have all the information now of the latest number of vets we have, what war they came from, male, female, age, category, you name it, I, I received a lot of information. It may not be exactly up to date, but I, I did get it, I'm waiting on the scope of our program here, Veteran Service Officer, and I know everybody's busy right now, but I'm hoping to get some type of meeting going so we can figure out the, uh, where we lack in service, and I've checked with veterans in the area, I've been, I've been out asking, I know a lot of vets, and they say they have a hard time getting in. So there is a need for our Veteran Service Officer to have help. We just got to find what scope of help it is by what he's lacking right now. The VA, the Veteran Administration is mostly the help, the health part of it. They are two separate entities, I thought there might have been a duplication of services. In my mind, I do not believe that is, no, is, is not the case. And I'm going to follow a veteran, I have a veteran that just came back from South Korea, I'm not going to give him his, give him your, his name yet, and I'm, he's going to invite me through the whole process. He, he's only been out a week, and I'm going to make, I'm going to follow him through the whole process with our Veteran Service Officer, so I have an idea of what it entails, I think it's just going to be very enlightening for me. The other thing, I, I did give my card, and I, I can't remember who the gentleman was here that was going to start a Boys and Girls Club. I, I've been waiting on that, because I, I did my, I, I... I, I, I've been waiting on that, because I, I did my, I, I read about it, and, and I see how it works in, in many communities, and I didn't know if we, if, if he hears this, if he'll get ahold of me.
Try to get him back again, maybe the next morning.
Well, I don't know if he has to be back. I gave him a card, because he said he was going to organize it, and I thought I could offer some of my services, being on little league boards and other boards in the community, so... Okay, and then I, I am interested in going into the MAC, uh, Conference, County Issue Workshop on October 1st and 3rd. I just want to get that all front. I, I looked up, uh, some of the strategies that we have opportunity to look at, transportation, county services, material management, which it turns out to be the solid waste and, not the solid waste, but the, the landfill. And I'm on that board, so I could probably get some information for them. And it also talks about pensions and O P E B, other, um, funded liabilities. I don't know where we are with that, but I know the budget season's coming up, and I'm going to be very happy to be involved in that. And I guess the last thing I will say, and I, I, I still support Zoom. Thank you.
Okay, uh, first of all, yes, I do support Bill LaRouche, 100%. Uh, second, I want to thank, uh, the sheriff and the whole crew there. The, uh, I think it was about 10 days ago, something like that, they had, uh, two inspections, one from the state, which was excellent. They rated us very excellent, and one from the feds. And the one from the feds, I talked to, uh, Sheriff, and he says that inspection on the jail was supposed to take five days. It only took two days. They have, uh, inspected 300, and I believe the number was 369 jails throughout the U.S. And they rated Delta County number one, which is phenomenal. Uh, that's, that's all. Steve took a lot of my stuff, so...
That's, that's okay.
Mr. Barron? I have a quote here from Charles Kettering. People are very open-minded about new things, as long as they're exactly like the old ones. Ashley?
I have a comment on the, I have a comment on the addressing. We do have an addressing committee. It concern, it has, um, dispatch, building and zoning, and the road commission. And then they report back on, and to me. We have another meeting set up. Um, we're looking at adding, uh, frequently asked questions page to our website, and also a point of contact, so that all those items have, are being taken care of, so, just so you know.
I will try to answer some of the questions that were asked. I had spoken to Scott Graham regarding our rules and procedures. It was shortly after we had just passed, or decided to, uh, hire him. He didn't know what they were. Lauren, being the prosecuting attorney of this county, has access to those any time. So, she doesn't need to ask me for them. She can see them anytime. He wanted to know what they were. He wanted to look at them, which is a very appropriate question. In reference to, I will find out from her what constitutes a personal attack. And, um, we'll try to get back to you, uh, at the next meeting about it. The radio, we have an administrator who is, uh, administrating. She is also controlling. She is also doing human resources. So, there is no dishonesty intended there. If you take it differently than I say it, that doesn't make me, my intent dishonest. I can't convince you of how I'm using my logic, but, uh, I was pretty straightforward with that. The numbers speak for themselves. You don't have to like me to look at the numbers and see. And you don't have to hate me, for that matter, either. Board of Commissioners meeting set up for the, uh, beginning of September. Um, it's at the normal time. It's 5:00. It's Commissioners Informational Workshop. Uh, the one after that will be, uh, two weeks later, and that'll be at 5:15 here at the Service Center. Uh, no 30-day appointments, and then I would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Have a good day, folks.